Thank you. Rob, would you please call the roll?
Emily E. Ball.
Here.
Silver Key.
Here.
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 Okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Savage and she will lead the discussion this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're so excited to be able to share updated information from our August presentation. And I have with me Kent Perk from Bialharts Architects who's here to present as well. Craig Bialharts does send his apologies. He had a last-minute conflict that came up. So Kent and I are going to tag-team the show tonight. If you have questions that we are unable to answer, then Craig will get those to Craig and he'll help us out. We also expect our construction managers, Rudolph Libby, to be here. They were running a little late this evening. So Kent, if you'd like to join me and we'll... So back in August, we did our first community presentation and there we focused on the overall site plan. So the first thing we'd like to share with you this evening are some changes that were made as a result of the feedback we received from that event. One of the biggest changes that we talked about in August was the orientation of the 6 to 12 building. And at the time, we had the orientation pointing more towards the east versus the south. So as you can see from the new site plan revision, do you have your pointer? Okay. The new building, the 6 to 12 building is now oriented towards Fountain Grove Drive. So we've completely changed the rotation of that building. We've also worked on the parking lots and the access for parents. So coming off Fountain Grove Drive, County Road C, when a parent has a student to drop off at the 6 to 12 building, they're going to turn into the site, they're going to travel the route that Kent is following. The drop-off is anywhere along that long white sidewalk, and you will not have students crossing over the parking lot to get into the building. There are really two entrances, one for high school and one for middle school. But again, students can be dropped off anywhere on that sidewalk area. As parents leave that site, they will be instructed, we'll have to work on this a little bit, but will only turn right after drop-off. So we won't turn left, which would cause some traffic problems, but parents will turn right and then they can exit the campus from multiple roadways. Bus traffic will also come in off Fountain Grove Drive. The state highly suggests that buses be completely separated from staff, students, and parent drop-off. So this entrance will only be for the school buses, and then the school bus parking will be towards the middle of campus. Students will then have walkways to get either to the 6 to 12 building or to the pre-K to 5 building. There will not be a need for buses to drop off at two separate buildings. There will be one centralized location. Parents who are dropping off at the pre-K to 5 are going to enter from the same right-of-way that they do now, off Town Line and Center Street corner, near the football field. So they'll come in that entrance and again, they will drop off anywhere along the sidewalk in front of the pre-K to 5 building. For pickups, again, we tend to have parents that line up prior to dismissal time. So parents for the pre-K to 5 will line up along that same route. They'll also have a little bit of extra parking along the front entrance of the building, which currently is used only for bus traffic, but with us taking the buses out of that pattern, we will have some additional spaces for parent pickup there. When parents exit from the pre-K to 5 building, they'll exit at the light at Town Line Road. That light will remain, and so parents can choose to go left or right at that exit. From the traffic study, while we're on this overall site plan, some of the things that we've learned is that Fountain Grove Drive is recommended to be widened to include both a left-turn lane into the site and a right-turn lane. The other major area of concern with the traffic study was actually the intersection of Town Line Road and Center Street. It was clearly defined that that was actually a higher priority than Fountain Grove Drive. So they recommended both a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane for Center Street. So we are in meetings with the city and looking at those improvements and how those can be accomplished as part of the overall site development. The student parking area is going to double up as an area as you, as we kind of zoom in in the building tonight, you're going to see that we have an arts wing and an athletic wing. So student parking will assist with the arts wing, and then where the buses are parked during the day for events in the evening, that will be additional parking for athletic events and parents and spectators. Kent, anything that I've missed?
One of the things that we're, one of the things that, the concerns we also had, we do have a connector road and we feel that is necessary for circulation at times other than during the school, but we're looking at gating areas off because though it is necessary for circulation, like I said, maybe in off-hours, we don't necessarily want students using that. One of the questions that came up in an earlier meeting was, what if my fifth grader needs to be picked up by his senior sibling? And that's fine, but we're, what we're asking that, how that would occur is for the younger student to walk over to the 612 building and not to have high schoolers driving over to the elementary.
There's a couple of areas shaded that we want to make sure we include as well in this discussion. Future transportation area, we currently have a maintenance building on the campus. There are plans to move the transportation center out to campus, although it's not been defined as far as a timeline of when that would happen. But there is area planned and reserved for this to take place sometime in the future. The three practice fields that you see kind of highlighted, those won't necessarily be elevated or perfect practice fields, but that just shows a representation of how big that green space will be. And then we also have some future expansion as far as if the community would ever like to place an auditorium on the site. We do have plans for an auditorium. We also have plans for an expansion of the gymnasium area. This is one area that's still been a concern for some in the community. And then we also have future classroom expansion. If in fact our educational student enrollment would grow as a result of this project, we do have room for future classroom expansion as well. Any general questions on the site before we go on to the next slides? Tom?
I wonder, working on a county road here, you know, is road access, is it for the side of the school?
Sidewalks are, one of the things we talked about when we met with the city is looking at applying for a Safe to Schools grant, which focuses on sidewalks. But the traffic study actually showed that the sidewalks are needed more in the northeast corner of the site, coming from Cardinal and Barrister versus coming on Fountain Grove Drive. So again, depending on the funding that may be available through this grant, that was where the traffic study indicated that the most foot traffic is going to come from. Yes?
Would that be part of the master plan or is that something that we discussed?
The sidewalk plan? The city, that's why we're working with the city, because the city actually would have to install and maintain the sidewalks outside of our campus. There is money in the plan dedicated to road construction, but the sidewalk grant has to be applied through the city and has to come through city funds. Yes, Mr. Hoopie?
The buses entering the school, once they come in, do we drop off students? How would that proceed?
Thank you. There's two options that we're looking at. We have not finalized this. One option is that the buses will come in from Fountain Grove Drive and then turn around and exit Fountain Grove Drive as well. The second option that the traffic study presented to us is that they actually could travel north and exit at the light on Town Line Road. We're not sure which option we prefer, and it may be one of those situations where what we think will be the best when we go into the plan really is not. So we do have two options for our buses to leave the property. We'll see which one works best. Yes?
Well, because sidewalk plans, if they're built in for bicycles, parking, and that kind of traffic?
I'm going to let you take that one. I don't know that one.
Sure. As a, as a LEED project, LEED requires, or at least one of the ways you can get a few points in the LEED program, is to provide bike paths and bike parking. And so we will, we will look at that possibility. That is usually a point that we, we go for in most of our projects, and we would, we plan on doing that here as well.
Kent, can you just do a short explanation of what that LEED certification is, what it means?
What LEED looks at is, is things that you can do in your building for energy efficiency. Anything green, to use a more current term, is endorsed by LEED and the U.S. Green Building Council. In addition to high-efficiency heating and cooling systems, it also looks at creating special parking spaces for high-efficiency vehicles, things like that. It's, it's just ways that you can, little things you can do in your project to, to get these points. And the OSFC does require a silver certification, and so that's kind of in the middle between bronze and gold. And, and that's kind of how, how it works.
What does the acronym stand for?
Yeah, it's, LEED stands for, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't, it's, it's Leadership and Environmental Design. There's another E in there somewhere, but...
Yeah, I think a very short second, that's what said, so demand sidewalks along Fountain Grove Drive. Did you say, well, you can't need sidewalks here because the demand is in city traffic. Now that's right. What happens in the future if the demand is developed to the south side of Fountain Grove Drive, is there sidewalks?
The, the traffic study did say that, that depending on future site development, if, if there was tremendous growth across the road, that that would have to be something that was re-looked at. But again, the highest priority was in that northeast corner where the neighborhoods are already established and where the majority of the foot traffic is already coming from.
Right away we'll have to be standing now, or you'll be supposed to keep driving along the edge of the road, so might as well do it.
Okay. Well, yes.
Do you foresee a traffic scenario as the cars exit from the high school and turn west?
I see about a 15-minute window where this campus is going to be really, really busy no matter what, but we're going to try our best, again, based on what the traffic study told us, that it's best to develop one traffic pattern for all parents and visitors to follow during the key drop-off and pickup times. And then the sporting events traffic, there will be multiple exits where people can get out of the site from different sporting or arts events.
Does that, I'm wondering, when they travel over here during morning backup, on the football field, and then whatever, and then it kind of disrupts that all those people that are trying to, are they still trying to turn in to the middle school?
There will be, I, I did miss that. At that entrance there, the recommendation was to have a right-turn lane installed as well as a left-turn lane. So again, the through traffic will be able to get through fairly quickly, and the right, and those two turn lanes will assist in that backup. So thank you. Yes, I did forget to talk about that entrance. Okay, we can, oh, yep.
In the first stage, we showed out there, there's a playground right now. Is that going to, um, most of the most schools will have to pass through?
Yes. The playground that currently exists will be moved into the loop. So there's actually two playgrounds for the pre-K to 5 building, one that will be exclusively for preschool and kindergarten, and then the second for grades one to five. So children will no longer have to cross the through road to get to the playground. Okay, we can come back. We'll, we'll do another one. And then we're going to, the next thing we're going to show you is kind of our overall view of the pre-K to 5. Yes?
So the improvements that are needed for the same roads, can you explain the funding process for that, too? Just, because you've mentioned a lot of things that I've, that I've got to go off my head. I'm just trying to figure out how that happens.
Well, what I've said and, and what we've been doing is keeping the city and the township aware of our project and cooperating and sharing information with them throughout this process. So the city is looking at a Safe Schools grant, which would help them to address sidewalk issues. The city is looking at a federal grant that would help them to address the needs on Fountain Grove Drive. There is money in the budget from the school project to assist with roads. Again, depending on what the city is able to get through grant funding, then we can assist with some other areas. So there is no easy or simple answer right now, but all I can tell you and guarantee to you is that the mayor and, and the city engineer and the township were all in the same room getting the report and getting the information. Okay, so this, we're going to start kind of big picture and, and go down so you can see some of the labels. But this is an overview of the footprint of the current middle school, which will now become the pre-K to 5 building. And so for those of you who kind of maybe aren't sure of orientation, where it says the big green gymnasium, that is the current gymnasium, and that is closest to the football field. So we're going to zoom in on that area and start, and we'll go from right to left. So in this area, as I have already said, we left the gymnasium as-is. There will be some improvements to the gymnasium, but the location will not change. The size will not change. The student dining or the commons area that many of you maybe eat Friday night meals in is going to stay the same, in the same location. There is going to be improvements made to the kitchen. The kitchen has been expanded, and there will be a third serving line introduced into the kitchen area. Behind the kitchen, in the neon yellow, is our art studio. This is kind of a home base for art. We have two instructors currently, and there's some storage and ceramics kiln room in between. Some of the white areas in the back are remaining the same. We have some mechanical rooms, some custodial areas, and some storage areas. There's one set of locker rooms that will remain, one boy and one girl, but the other set of locker rooms are going to be converted into our new music area. And so we have music area that will have the capability to have either two separate classes, or that wall in between is expandable, so you can open it up and have one large rehearsal room. The kindergarten wing is also in this area. The kindergarten classrooms are equipped with restroom facilities, so each classroom has one restroom. And then they also have emergency exits because of state regulations and the size of their classrooms. So they will have direct access to the outside that will be secure, but it will provide a separate exit in case of emergency. We're going to travel down then the hallway. I think I got everything there. We're going to travel down the hallway towards the center of the building. And here, again, you can see that on the top, or the north side, or to the top of it, the pre-K and cuber garden rooms, again, these rooms are equipped, these preschool rooms and cuber garden rooms are equipped with their own individual restroom. They also have access to the outside because of the size of their classroom, which access directly to their preschool kindergarten playground area. On the opposite side of the hallway is our special education suite. We call it a suite because it's divided and it's meant to be used in multiple ways. We have two classrooms that could be self-contained rooms that share a restroom facility as well. We have some smaller classroom areas that could be used either as self-contained classrooms or as classrooms where a group of students may need to meet for some intervention. We have a resource area, which is where a lot of our therapies can occur. I don't know how familiar you are, but we do have students that have physical, severe physical needs that need individual therapies such as pulling a wagon, or swinging on a swing, or rolling on an exercise ball. So we have an area, instead of doing it in the hallway, which is where it's currently located, gives a little bit more privacy to the students, and that resource area would be shared with all of the special education suite. And then we also have some small conference rooms. Again, whether it be a testing situation or a one-on-one intervention meeting with a student, we have some areas for teachers and students to work together in small groups. Down towards the middle of the building, which is like the main entrance by the flagpole, you'll still have the administrative area, which is in green. We'll have a health clinic, which is something that we do not have currently. So we'll have an area dedicated for students who need assistance throughout the day. We'll also have guidance area and speech area and offices for our administration and receptionists. Across from that, where currently the media center is located, you'll see, this is one of our first examples of the 21st century learning concepts that we wanted to bring in, based on what our visioning team met last spring and wanted us to focus on. So anytime you see purple, this is a 21st century learning space. It will have lots of technology. It'll have lots of flexibility for students to do some hands-on learning, to do some collaboration. And what we show is a little theater that seats up to 150 students. So when we're having student presentations, or maybe community presentations, we'll now actually have an area for students to go and to be able to view those different presentations. As we travel down to the next hallway, and you'll notice we purposely have started out with our youngest students, and as we go through the building, the students get older. Again, we see in the future the need for some flexibility, not necessarily timestamping a student because of their birth date, but based on their needs. So we wanted to be able to create a flow in the building for students to travel from one grade to another. In our first and second grade hallway, the white area is a restroom, kind of located in the center of that hallway. You'll see we've created an outdoor classroom area for some outdoor learning with science and math and other curriculums. And each room, if you look at the two rooms together, again, we've created some of the flexibility. We have a student, small student group room in between that can be shared, and we also have a flexible movable wall, so that these classrooms can be opened up, and you can work with the students in the opposite side of the room, or if you have a large presentation, you can open it up to have one big area. So first grade team, second grade team, all located on this level. As we travel up those end stairs, you'll see the third and fourth grade wing, again, very similar classroom sizes, classroom layouts, and the small group rooms in between. We have another 21st century learning space that is flexible for teachers in this wing as well. We have, our media center is now located upstairs. And then in our fourth and fifth grade, our fourth grade actually is the one grade that we had to split, but we're working through that as far as which classrooms would be located in which wing. And then we have our fifth grade and another 21st century learning space, along with our small group rooms. The second floor gymnasium remains a gymnasium, so we did not, as the state had intended, for that to become educational space. We left that as the upper gymnasium for community use. So questions on the design or the concept of 21st century learning with the pre-K to 5 building? The one thing I'm most excited about is what our committee felt was most critically important was flexibility. And I think we've achieved that through some flexible design, some flexible space, and very excited about this building. Yes?
Those movable walls that are between each classroom, how, I mean, how sound are the cars?
I'm going to let...
Are they able to walk against the ceiling?
Better than the wall.
Better than the wall?
Yes.
Are they able to walk all the way up to the ceiling?
Yes, they do. Mm-hmm.
Is it like accordion style?
Actually, they're four-foot wide panels, and they're just hinged together. It's not like the old, like you called it an accordion style, that you, you've seen so many church basements that were basically a piece of cardboard. You know, these are actually, they have better acoustics than, than the wall. Well, one of the things, I guess it's probably the only change in the upper gymnasium area, and this was directed by the state, is we are adding an elevator for access to that second floor gymnasium. That was one of the things in the state's assessment of this building, that they said we needed to add ADA access to that second floor gymnasium.
Yes?
Are all the purple areas that we've seen part of the 21st century feedback that came through those meetings?
Yes, yes. Providing flexibility, because we're not sure going 40, 50 years into the future, what we'll need, but providing us with some additional space and flexibility so that we can adapt as we go. Yes?
Where's your other elevator?
The other elevator is right, right near the media center in the middle, middle of the building. It's the current elevator that exists.
So there's, you're hanging out with your laptop, you're using computers?
We're, we're a wireless district now. We plan to be a wireless district in the future, and we, we envision laptops, tablets, cell phones. Again, technology is ever-increasing and ever-changing, and this building will provide us, we currently have laptop carts. So worst-case scenario, that's what we take into the building, but I know that there are a lot of teachers that are very anxious to move beyond that as well. Yep?
On the, there, we're running on the first floor, with the units. So if those classes are having to go out, and there's a therapy going on, they're actually walking?
They are. And that is, that is one thing we discussed, but we still felt it was important to have it out of the hallway. And because of some space limitations, we were not able to put in an additional hallway. If we would put in an additional hallway, we would basically lose one whole classroom.
And then divider lines for gyms, since you're now having PK through fifth, all having to have to then, is there dividers or how do you?
Well, we still will have two gymnasiums to use throughout the day, and the bottom gymnasium can be divided in half, so that could provide us with actually three.
Whether, because we do have that partial position, right, where it goes, it's the thing that drops down now?
It's just like a netting.
And so is that staying the same, or will it ever?
For now, that stays the same. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the 6 to 12 building. Again, we'll kind of start big picture and move in so you can see some of the labels. But this is the first floor. Again, I, I keep bringing up the word flexibility, but that's because it was so key in our community feedback sessions. And not knowing where we're going 30, 40, 50 years down the road. So what you see is how we kind of plan to move in today, but it could change. We're, we're going to be adaptable to changes in education. The design of this building, you do see the courtyard, and we don't necessarily have it fully designed yet, but there will be a combination of some spaces that are it fully designed yet, but there will be a combination of some spaces that are accessible to different areas of the building, like the student dining, the athletic area. And then, what's not shown is there is a patio near the art department, so that the students can go outside and do some art in the courtyard as well. And then we'll develop some other educational areas in that. So that is a piece we're still working on. But if you were to draw a line across the back of the courtyard horizontally, what we've done is we've really separated the educational areas from the community use centers. So the educational area will be able to be secured during community events. And then, as I mentioned a little earlier, we have, on the left side, the athletic facilities, and we'll have an athletic entrance. I think that was some of the feedback we heard at our August meeting, to make sure that we made a statement with our athletic entrance. But I also want to do the same thing on the right side, with our arts entrance. So we'll have an arts area, that's in the purple, is where our music department is located, away from the educational space a little bit, but in their own dedicated area. The red is the student dining. There is a stage in the six to 12 building that could be used for middle school concerts, kindergarten performances if needed, kindergarten programs, grandparents' day, different types of events that may occur throughout the school year. The kitchen is located kind of in-between, in the gray. And then, if you take and divide the building vertically, on the right side is where we will house the middle school, or the six to eight students, and the left side will be for the high school, nine through 12. So we've kind of divided it into sectors, and in the front, in the diamond shape, that will be your administrative area, with entrances, as we talked about, on both sides. In the neon green, in this picture, is our art department, both middle school and high school. So again, it's kind of one of those common buffer zones, that will keep the students in their respective areas of the building. In the blue, and we're going to blow this up in a little bit, our educational areas are designed as educational suites, or 21st century learning suites, and there's a, the blue is your science labs. And we'll talk about the flexibility of those in just a little bit. On the second floor, again, you can see the gymnasium area. On the second floor, if we start in the middle, the media center is another common space that will have entrances from both sides. The business department, and the life skills department, which again, will offer some classwork for both areas. The light blue colors are your special education classrooms and centers. Anything I missed on that one? Okay. Any questions, we'll blow up the educational suite.
So blue is the new purple, and high school?
No.
No, no. Do you want to, can we blow up that other one?
Yeah.
I think that'll be better. That one, perfect. Okay, so this is kind of an aerial view of the educational site that we just zoomed in on. Whether it be in the high school side, or the middle school side, whether it be on the first floor, or the second floor, they're all designed in the same manner. Out of the outer ring, you have six classrooms that can be, again, utilized in multiple ways. The furniture placements that are shown are actually all the same furniture. It's just flexible enough that you can use in rows, you can use in table groups, you can use in circle study groups, you can use in four students working together, you can use it in multiple ways. Flexible furniture is, furniture is another thing that has changed for 21st century in these new building projects. Everything is movable and redesigned. Also, each room will have technology. Every classroom in our district will have the latest technology. It's our goal to bid this piece of the project at the very end, so that we get the most up-to-date technology that is available. But every classroom, including your music, your art, your health, any classroom will have the latest technology presentation available. We've shown a couple of different ways that classrooms can be flexible in this building. Some of the classrooms have the movable walls that we talked about with the elementary side. Some of the classrooms have a double-wide door shown. Again, we're not quite sure budgeter, budgeter, budget-wise, let's go that way, budget-wise, how we'll be able to, how this is going to cost out, so we've left ourselves a couple of options there. Also shown, and we have a little bit better picture of this, but there's a dotted line, maybe you can see it best in the science labs. Those dotted lines, this is something we took from our session as well, are, really operate like a garage door. So as the room necessitates it, you may want to have that open, to have students that can go in and out of the rooms easy, or you may want to have it shut. Again, probably a concept we're still, like, working with, and how it would be used, but it was definitely a part of what our group saw. One of the things I'm also excited about, if you notice these around the inside, these small, like booth areas. One of the schools that I was fortunate enough to travel to see in Myland, Michigan, has developed, they've actually built a 21st century learning concept for their high school. These, she would have brought the picture. These, if you think about a restaurant, 1950s, with the jukebox at the end of the table, and the booths, that's what you're seeing here. These are student work booths, that have the latest technology, and they have flat-screen televisions on the side, so that students can plug in their technology and work together in a group setting, with visibility from all sides of the hallway. There's also some small group rooms, for a little bit larger group for our students and teachers. And then, again, as we mentioned, the science labs, there are actually eight?
Eight total.
Eight total science labs in the building, and we're working with the science department to really kind of zero in on what that design would be. We're indicating, again, a need for flexibility, lots of technology, lots of hands-on materials in our science departments. Okay, why don't we zoom back out, and then, and again, we'll open it up for questions, or comments, or maybe Kent has something that I've forgotten, but, yes?
I don't understand the overhead door, why overhead as opposed to just three?
In the videos that we saw, in the schools that have really truly embraced the 21st century learning concepts, it provides more flexibility, and much quicker. So it's the push of a button, you can open the door and expand your classroom. One of the biggest things we learned is that classroom, or education, can take place anywhere. Can take place in the hallway, can take place outdoors. And so, the flexibility of being able to open up your classroom and collaborate with others, it was, just makes it real easy. You'll see, in some of the modern magazines, that some people do sliding glass doors, which accomplish the same concept. In some office buildings, you probably have some conference rooms that have sliding glass doors, that you can make them bigger or smaller. It's the same concept, it just is a little bit easier to use.
Which is, that goes in the hallway?
Mm-hmm. Yes?
I have a question about the art area, which you have up there.
Yes.
Which would one state a lot, wasn't as large, but we would like to have as clear as we can, if we had money aside, we'd make the area larger. As large, is that area compared to what state originally would have a lot of us?
Well, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Kent answer that, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna, I'm, sorry. I did ask Kent earlier today, because another thing we talked about was the music rooms, and in the music area, we have three separate rehearsal studios, one for band, one for orchestra, one for choir. My question to Kent today was, when are you going to come back and tell me that we are, that something has to go? Because up till this point, working with Kent on this design, has been amazing. It's been an amazing journey. He's really listened to our teachers, providing great feedback. So my question to him this afternoon was, when are you going to come and tell me that something has to go? And Kent said that we are right on with our space requirements. So we've been able to, or, not we, but Kent, I didn't do any drawings. Kent has really been able to show through the state formula, what our community listed as a priority, but also kind of stay within their ranks. But I'll let you answer that, maybe better.
One of the ways that we did that as well, is you'll see this CAD lab listed as part of the art department. The art department has that now. I got the privilege of touring the art department last week, and experienced just an awesome ceramics program firsthand, as far as what goes on there. And so that was one way, because that was originally just programmed as a computer lab. And, and we felt, yes, it is a computer lab, and it will be used as such, but it is very, very closely tied to the art department, currently, and they wanted to keep it that way. So that was one way, we kind of got a little extra space, and it was just a matter of moving that room and locating it. It was originally upstairs. One of the other things I learned in touring the art department, is they don't have storage rooms. Everything is stored in their art room. And the state gives you space for storage rooms, and it gives you space for kiln and ceramic storage rooms. So we're able to capture that area, and put it into the suite. So really, as far as, when you look at what we currently have for area, and what we will have, I think we actually have a little bit of a net gain because of that.
Other questions? Yep. Tim?
I have a question for, with the middle school science and the high school science, and I can't really tell how big those buildings are. Are there plans that would allow for, say, robotics lab, linear type lab, a business-oriented, as we adapt to, you talk about 20, 30 years down the road, whatever our industries are in town, hopefully they grow, something that we can adapt to what's going on with the walls and the industry we have in town?
Absolutely, I'm gonna answer that two ways. First, two ways. First of all, those lab areas are very large. Do you know the square footage on those by chance?
The middle school piece is just shy of 1,200 square feet. I think we're looking at close to 2,000 in the ceramics lab.
No, in science.
Oh, I'm sorry, science. I'm sorry. Yeah, those I think are about 1,100 square feet.
Okay. So first of all, there's a lot of space, and my science department, you know, again, in looking ahead, want the flexibility to add the different programs, and not lock us into one mode of learning, or one area of learning. So, yes. And then, in the visioning team, one of the things we talked about, that I think was enlightening for me, is that, as I started out and said, you know, the high school will be on the left, and the middle school will be on the right, we've also talked about ways to group students through departments. We've talked about ways to group students through academies. And so, again, if we were to be able to get to that point, which I really hope we are in my, in my life as an educator, we could have an academy in one of these wings, and using all of the space, based on what our community feels is its most important need at the time. So I'm very excited to where this building could take us in the future, and what it's providing for us today. Way in the back.
Those four high schools, what do you say?
Let's go to the gymnasium area. So I will tell you that there are many in the community who realize that we are going to be short on gymnasium space, especially in the winter. This has been expressed to me multiple times. One of the ways that we're going to address that, is with this gymnasium, we're currently showing it in competition mode. So in competition mode, we have a varsity gymnasium floor, with seating to fit, how many, do you remember?
1,900.
Around 1,900 spectators, within this gymnasium. When this is not being used for maybe a boys' basketball game, or a tournament game, or a US Army Band performance, or a cooking show, we can close the larger portion with a wall, again, we felt this was very important, push those bleachers back, and we have another full-size gymnasium on that side. So during the day, that wall will be shut, so that we have middle school on the left, and the middle school locker rooms are located on the left, and then high school on the right, and the high school locker rooms are located on the right. Other questions? Yes?
Do you think, like, when you have orchestra performing at home, they start the fifth grade, which means that all goes through to the other building? So what's the difference in that?
The teachers, the instructors are aware of that currently, and the plan would be that they would share some space. We will have to look at scheduling, but that the teachers would travel over to the elementary building for those ensembles.
Is there storage built in for the instruments like they have now?
Mm-hmm. There's storage built in, there's storage rooms, there's storage within some of their classrooms. They've been getting us their inventory list of what they have now, and what they think they'll have in the future, and there is plenty of storage built in for the instruments. Yes?
I know, but do you try and find those elevators, will high school also have those?
I'm gonna let you, I don't, I haven't seen those yet, but I'm sure they are.
Yes, we do, it's right here. Right near the middle school entrance.
Okay.
Lockers, sorry, are they, they're on the hall?
Yeah, lockers are in the hallway. Does the board members have any comments that you'd like to share, or? Oh, yeah, we have one more picture. Okay. You want to blow it up? So we thought we would give you, as we get further and further into the design, Kent's firm is able to provide some 3D drawings for the community and for the staff to see. So this is actually a picture inside one of those fourth grade classrooms that we talked about. You can see from this angle, the door to the hallway, and then the small group room, with access on both sides. The panels of the walls are currently shown open, but those are the panels that would shut to create two distinct learning areas. And then, the storage, every classroom will have a bookshelf, every classroom will have a sink, every classroom will have what they call, is it a bobler? Is that right?
Wobbler?
Wobbler? Oh, bubbler. A bubbler, which is like a water fountain, for students. And so you can see the storage area, there's countertop space in every classroom, and then the technology and the whiteboard, all the way across in the other classroom, and so the learning wall. So again, this is kind of just a 3D rendering of what an elementary, typical elementary classroom will look like. Purple instead of blue, and, but again- And, but again, just showing you, we haven't picked out floor finishings or colors or anything like that yet, but this is just kind of a rendering. And then what's our other? Yeah, yeah. So now we'll switch to that 21st century learning suite at the high school. Now, this has changed a little bit. This was our first draft of the 21st century educational learning area. But again, you can see the science labs and the divisible walls. You can see how large that space is relative to the six classrooms that surround it. And then there are student group rooms in the center that are accessible for each area. And then you can see the lockers even being shown in the hallway in the corridor. Each educational suite will have student restroom facilities. So students will not have to travel far in the building to get to restroom facilities. And the common spaces are more towards the middle of the building. Other questions? Yeah, again, this is kind of a 3D version of, of one of the garage doors that we talked about. Whether they would be all clear or only partially clear or whether they'll be there at all is something yet that we're still working on with our design. Yes.
Are we at a point where say Kevin Rich or somebody with that skill that could develop a video that we can give to the industry here in town? Because one of the things we sold as a campaign committee was bringing people to town in our industry and bringing talent to town. That we would be able to, was that those people show this is what we got coming. And I think this is a wonderful presentation. And would be very impressive to be able to hand to somebody that they can take home and show their family. If they were considering we would try to take a position with all the companies here in town or the development people could show that companies coming to town. I just think that'd be a wonderful tool when we get to the point. Maybe this isn't a tool, but I think that'd be a fair.
I, I think that's a great idea. We, we have been archiving these presentations on our school website and will continue to do so. Very excited as we get to the construction phase. And again, just a reminder that as of right now, we're scheduled to begin breaking ground in the spring of 2015. We'll build the six to 12 building first. We'll move students into that building in the fall of 2016. Students that are currently in the middle school will be moved temporarily to the current high school. So the current high school will house grades two through five for the 16, 17 school year while the remodeling and renovation is going on at the middle school. And then in the fall of 2017, we will transition the preschool through grade five students into the new pre-K to five building. I think that's a great idea, Tim. I think that as we continue this process, we'll continue to provide this information. But putting together a video, once we have the final design and, and we're watching construction happen, I think that that's a great idea. You go right ahead, kicking off.
I just want to add a little comment to that. We are now on the, in the, in both projects, we are now into what they call the design development phase. We have moved beyond the schematic design. These are, are phases that the state, basically guidelines that they have set up. And now that we are to the point on the six 12 building that we are, we're going to move beyond AutoCAD and start using, converting the building and using a Revit software. And it's more of a three-dimensional software. And that'll continue to be used then through this phase of the building. And with that, the, the rendering that you saw of the classroom, that was used, or that was created using the Revit software. And so we are now starting to model the entire six 12 building. Whether or not we take the entire building to that degree of detail, I'm not sure. But we are starting to model that and we'll be able to, to create views similar to that of, of any area that we want to look at in the building. And I know, you know, it's important to look at, it's important to look at the educational areas, but it's also important to look at what the public's going to see. They're going to see that event entrance when they come to a ballgame. And we want to make sure that that is a, a very well-designed space. And so with the software, we'll be able to look at that in three dimensions.
What's the outside, did it get to that, was the side of the like? Or is there a school in the area that has the same kind?
We are in the very preliminary stages of the outside. We have sketched up some, some exterior elevations. And that modeling process is exterior and interior. So as we continue with this process in this software, we'll be able to, to take a look at that outside in three dimensions as well.
Do you have enough parking space provided for a basketball game? Full house?
You want to go back to the site page?
Does that provide enough parking?
Well, we're, we're definitely going to have more parking than we currently do for a high school basketball game. I can guarantee that. So we're going to have the, the bus parking area, which will convert to event parking. We're still going to have the visitor staff parking up front. We're going to have the student staff parking on the opposite side of the building so that we can use that as well for overflow. We'll still have the existing parking lot at the middle school. But we're, that's one thing, Rick, that we're dictated by the state and they will only co-fund so much parking. So that might be something that we have to look at extending later on our own if in fact we, we find that we don't have enough spaces. But again, I think we'll definitely have more than we currently have for high school basketball. And we'll have to kind of just wait and see as that develops.
While you're on that, do you think you go down to change, is any parking changing for the front entrance of the middle school with current rates?
No, there's no plans to change the current parking area in the front.
Should Nate can see, how does it compare to the current?
I'm going to let you tackle that one.
It's very close. The problem with, it's really an apples to oranges comparison. If you were to replace the current bleachers, you would lose a substantial number of seats because the bleachers you currently have are not up to code. They only have half of the aisles that you're required to have. So it's kind of a balancing act that we're, that we were trying to, we were trying to get the same number of seats without, you know, ballooning the gym beyond the scope of what we, you know, we were limited to. But I know based on some measurements I took of the space, accounting for loss due to aisleways, we were right around that 1950 to 2,000 number. Currently, yes. In, in the current high school or here? Yeah, currently in the, in the, in the existing high school.
Can you see in the high school, you're investigating, you're looking at which school you're?
Students will, students will transition into the new high school, the new six to 12 building in the fall of 2016. Okay, well, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for giving up some of your time this evening and joining us for this presentation. Very happy that BMU is here as well as the Bryan Times to provide coverage for our event. We will hope to archive this presentation as well and have the photos that we've shared this evening available on our website. We will do our best to make sure this time, if you download them, that we can zoom in and out. I apologize for that after our last meeting. And Kent and I will stick around for questions. If you have further questions, again, thank you for giving your time to provide input and feedback to the school. We definitely appreciate it.